Want to turn off your cellphone or any other electronic devices to ensure that we don't cause any distractions. If you're planning on presenting testimony, please sign the sheet at the back of the room. The time is 6:00. The time set for this public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'm sorry, Matt, sir, we have to get on the record.
You what?
Get on the record.
Okay, sorry.
That was a practice run, good one.
You want to do that all over again?
You're on the record again.
Okay, we're now on the record. The time is 6:00. Time set for the public hearing. All three commissioners are present. There's no changes to the agenda that I'm aware of. We have the 15-3-5 rule, 15 minutes for the applicant and 3 minutes for anybody's presenting testimony, and then 5 minutes for any rebuttal. I do have a timer up here, we'll notify you if it gets to that. Okay, the...I'll now open the public hearing on application number 202001994-S, High Grove Orchard subdivision. First, we'll hear from staff, and then we'll take testimony.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 202001994-S is a plenary plat for the High Grove Orchard subdivision. The subdivision consists of two residential lots. The property is located at 3865 South Black Hat Road in Section 28 Township 3 North, Range 1 West. The property is on the west side of Black Hat Road, approximately a third of a mile south of Victory Road. The property consists of 13.82 acres. The property is zoned rural-urban transition. This district requires a minimum lot size of 5 acres and 250 feet of street frontage. Lot 1 will consist of 8.82 acres and has 564.95 feet of street frontage onto South Black Hat Road. And the, in the plat right here, the southern lot is Lot 1. And then Lot 2 will consist of 5 acres and has 337.06 feet of street frontage on South Black Hat Road, and this is the lot that's to the north here. It should be noted that Lot 1 has a residence on it, so if you look at the plat right here, this is the existing residence that's on Lot 1. The proposed subdivision complies with the subdivision regulations in Chapter 8-6 of AA County Code. The property is located in Meridian's Impact area. The future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan designates the property as a low-density residential, which is intended for single-family homes at densities of 3 dwelling units or less per acre. The proposed subdivision is compatible with the future land use map and with the adopted comprehensive plan. The AA County Highway District responded in Exhibit Number 27 that they've reviewed the application and have determined that there are no improvements required in street since the development is generating less than 10 additional trips per daily, average daily trips per day, which is consistent with their policy. The development is estimated to generate 10 additional trips per day with 10 existing and 1 additional vehicle trip per hour in the PM peak hour with 1 existing, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, 10th Edition. Black Hat Road has 106 vehicle trips per hour for the PM peak hour traffic count, which is better than Level of Service D. For the PM, like, the acceptable level of service for a two-lane minor arterial is Level of Service E, which is 575 vehicle trips per hour. The AA County Planning and Zoning Commission, after November 12, 2020, public hearing, voted to recommend approval of this subdivision to the board. Staff finds that the application complies with the AA County Code and the Meridian Comprehensive Plan as adopted by AA County and recommends approval to the board of this application. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? First, before we proceed, I need to give notice that I know the applicants, both of them. I have no conflict with the property or the applicants, but I think it's important to get that on the record.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
For the record, I also need to state that I am familiar with the applicants, Jason and Shelley Monks as well.
You might want to state you don't have a conflict.
And to follow up on that, I don't believe I have any conflict of interest in this case. Thank you.
Okay. Does any of the commissioners have any questions about the case?
Not at this time.
No questions from the commissioner, to staff? Is Shelley on the WebEx? I see SM. Shelley, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Would you like to, would you like to give us any additional information, Shelley?
I don't think I have any other additional information. My husband's here as well, does he have any additional information?
There's.
Hi, Commissioners, nice to kind of see you again.
Yes.
No, no additional information, we just have our lot, our acreage here, we wanted to split off 5 acres to be sold for a single-family dwelling is all that can be put on that because of the requirement for 5-acre minimums, and so that's all we're looking to do at this time.
Well, good, we thank you. Thank you for your input, and it seems it was a pretty clean staff report. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this issue? I don't hear anybody. With that, we will close the public hearing on...
You might want to ask if we have questions for...
Oh, do you have questions?
Yeah, if we have questions for them, for the Monks, yeah. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Chair, yes, thank you. I don't really have a question. Hi.
Hi.
How are you? So I just wanted to make sure that you are aware, this isn't, this isn't a questioning thing, but you are located in the Ada County Nitrate Priority area, are you aware of that? So what that, what that means is, in your, when you, you have a well like that, some of the areas are showing up with hotspots, according to a recent study, and so your arsenic levels in your well are higher than they should be, and it's usually quite easily fixed. You'll probably want to take a sample down and have it, have it tested just to see where your well is in particular. But also, I think reverse osmosis, it's like $200, you can put on your faucets and really cure it, and so it's not a huge issue, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, because it is kind of buried in the report here, but just so you check that out, just to make sure you guys all stay healthy. That I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenyon. Is there any questions of Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Chairman. Hello, Mr. and Mrs. Monks, nice to see you. So I'm curious, is this the first time you've gone through the conditional use process?
It is, yes.
You know, I'm getting used to the process myself. It looks like it generates a lot of paperwork. I was curious what your thoughts on the process were.
I think, I think the staff there at Ada County has been extremely helpful for us. Obviously, it's a long process, but being novice in this, this program, the staff there was, just literally helped, you know, walked us through it, which was very helpful. We had a neighbor who went through this process, I think, a year ago, and paid a developer an awful lot of money to go through the process themselves, and so, I mean, I can't, no complaints at all about the staff there, they were all very helpful, and literally just kind of held our hands and walked through it. The length of the process is obviously, you know, a function of public notices, you know, meetings, obviously with COVID, that probably slowed some things down as well, but as far as, I can't have any complaints with your, with your staff there, they've just been fantastic.
Yeah, I couldn't have done it without Brent. He's probably tired of hearing from me.
Okay. Well, thank you, that's good to hear.
Thank you. If there's any other comments or suggestions, we will close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed on item 20220...excuse me, start over. The public hearing is now closed on 202001994-S, High Grove Orchard subdivision. Is there any discussion amongst, amongst the commission?
I have no discussion, and I'm ready to make a motion as soon as you guys are ready.
Do you have any discussion?
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be good to go.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason and Shelley. Okay, make a motion.
All right, certainly. Chairman, I would move to approve application number 202001994-S, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report, and basically that it complies with the Meridian Comprehensive Plan that's adopted by Ada County. It also complies with Ada County Code Sections 865 and Section 943. So with that, we'll just need a second.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Most passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, we appreciate your guys' help.
Absolutely. Okay. I will now open the public hearing for 202002472-ACV, Rick Wiseman. Public hearing is open. I would, I'll first, first take testimony from staff.
Bear with me just a second, trying to share my screen. There we go. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, I have application 202002472-AC-V. This is, applicant is Rick Wiseman. This is a request for a variance to construct a 2,400-square-foot detached accessory structure in the front yard in order to avoid hillside development and tributaries on the property. The property is located at 10060 North Highway 16 Eagle and contains 9.95 acres. It's in Section 8 of Township 5 North, Range 1 West. So Ada County Code limits the construction of accessory structures in the front yard to 1,500 square feet, and thus, this is a need for the variance for this applicant. The proposed structure is for personal use and storage and will be constructed of steel. The maximum lot coverage of 5% for the property, or 21,000, just over 21,000 square feet, will not be exceeded, and no setbacks for the property will be infringed on as a result of this structure. As you can see on your screen here, the, the area shaded in orange is the front yard, based on how the code reads. It's that portion between the front property line where the driveway enters and the front plane of the primary dwelling. Due to the physical characteristics of the site, placement of the proposed accessory structure is limited to the property's front yard. The wrong, the long triangular shape of the parcel, along with the existing terrain of the property, creates an undue hardship. A large portion of the property's side and rear yard either contains slopes greater than 15%, those are those areas there in yellow, those are all slopes greater than 15%, or floodplain and tributaries. Sorry, it's kind of squished here, but the floodplain is all that area in blue. Both the hillside and floodplain development require additional permitting and would disturb the, the topography of the site if this structure were to be placed in those areas. In addition to the hillside and floodplain on the site, the applicant has stated in his detailed letter that the building cannot be located northeast of the home. While the area is flat, the building would be located on top of, on top of or very close to the septic leach field, as you can see here on the site plan. That, you know, that placement there could create a public safety issue. In addition to the need for the variance to relieve this hardship based on the characteristics of the site, the variance is also not allowed to grant a special right or privilege that is otherwise allowed in the base district. Approval of this variance would not be granting a special right or privilege because the property has yet to be granted an accessory structure, and accessory structures greater than 1,500 square feet are defined as an accessory use in the Rural Residential Zoning District, which is the zoning for this property. Lastly, the variance must not be detrimental to the public health and safety or welfare. Comments received by various public agencies like the Building Division, Central District Health, and Star Fire District show that the placement of the structure in the front yard would not be detrimental to the public. Star Fire District is able to service both structures and visibility would not be hindered. As you can see here, this is a, an image from Google Maps that shows the, the property there kind of to the northeast. This is the driveway entering that, that property, and there's kind of a berm there. So really, the only entrance to the property is from this location. Other than that, I think we can move forward here. So based upon staff's review of the application, staff concludes that this application complies with the code, the Ada County Code, and recommends approval to the board as set out in the proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions of, from the commissioners to the staff?
Yes, Chairman Becca, a quick question. So Connor, on a variance, aren't there three criteria? And I see two here.
Yep.
That it's not granting a special right or privilege, and it's not detrimental to the public health. What's the third one?
It basically has to relieve an undue adverse impact, and so that is, the, the physical characteristics of the site would be those, those impacts, the tributaries, the hillside development there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? No questions. No questions. Is Mr. Wiseman or his representative here to speak to the issue?
Yes, this is Mr. Wiseman. Good, good evening, Commissioners.
Well, good evening.
Thank you.
All yours.
So I really don't have anything to add, sir. The, the only thing I would really add is that placing the structure where I would like to place it, it won't be seen from any of the, or it won't obstruct any view of the, of the highway or anything like that, and I was a first responder in my previous life, I worked for a police department for 31 years, so I'm pretty, pretty well familiar with the needs of first responders. One of the big issues apparently was that this building would potentially obstruct the view of the home, or could be confused with the home itself, due to the, the nature of where the building is located and the fact that the home is actually readily visible from the south, I'm sorry, the north entrance of the, of the, of the property, and any vehicle coming from the south would be able to see the home. So aside from the other things that the, that Connor already stated about the slopes and the tributaries, unfortunately, this is really the only viable location to place this structure.
Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant from any of the commissioners? Mr. Kenyon.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Wiseman. I just have a quick request for you. Could you just state on the record why this would, if we don't do this, it would create an undue hardship? I just want to make sure that for the record, we have, we have that clear, unclear.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem. And since we're on the record, actually, my, my first legal name is Eric, it's not Rick. I unfortunately got that put on there. So the hardship for me, actually, I have a disability, so if you look at that previous map that was up on the screen a few minutes ago, there's a second driveway that goes down to the lower portion of my property that's quite steep. The point of having this struc...oh, okay, thank you. The point of having the structure where it's at is that it's, I'm able to access it much more readily and easily than if it was in the lower portion of the property. Also, my garage, which is on the northwest corner of the home, has the incoming electrical located there. It would be a very short run from that power box to the actual building itself, and if at some point soon I was able to obtain a permit to tie into my septic system, that would also be available. If the building was placed in the lower portion of the property, aside from the slopes and the potential drainage issues, there's, there's a power pole down there, but dropping power would be very expensive, not to mention there's no well to service anything or a septic system to service anything down there.
Thank you very much, that's really helpful, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Are there other questions? Mr. Davidson, do you have questions?
No questions.
Is there any further testimony? There being no further testimony, I'm prepared to close the public hearing on file number Public hearing is closed. Do we have any discussion from the commission?
I'll go ahead and start, Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm convinced that we should go ahead and approve this, because I do think that Mr. Wiseman gave clear testimony here tonight, that if we don't, this will cause an undue hardship for him. So I also don't think that if we do, it doesn't really grant a special right or privilege, and nor if we grant it, it's not going to be detrimental to the public health or safety or welfare of other folks. So with that, I would be ready to make a motion to approve it.
You've got the floor, Commissioner.
All right, go ahead then. I move to approve application number 202002472-ACV, as in Victory, based on the findings of fact and the conclusions of law contained in the staff report, and then also the testimony that we heard tonight from Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Chair, I'll second that motion.
Motion having been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman.
Good luck.
We will now open the public hearing for item 201503899DAMZ202002477MSP, AlTura Consulting. Can we get a report from the staff?
So with this, it's like we've got three people that are going to testify.
Two of them are there.
Okay, we'll have them testify together. But what we want to make sure is that all of them, if they're not in here in person, that they can hear the testimony from staff and our questions, so we just want to make sure they're on weblogs, they've been here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is actually two applications put together. It's 202002447MSP and 201503899DA-M. So this is a new master site plan and a development agreement modification for the Meridian Research Park. They are located on Pollard Lane. They have an existing structure. That structure is Phase 1. They are proposing Phase 2, which is over in this area. And this, they had a development agreement with the rezon to the M1, which is light industrial. In 2015, they have had some modifications to the existing structure, and they want to do Phase 2, but they're also asking to add a second story to Phase 2, which increased the amount of square foot above what we would allow for a master site plan modification. Because there's a development agreement associated with this application, they did have to submit the development agreement in order to reflect what they're proposing on Phase 2 at the present time. They are open from 7 to 5. They have not submitted a landscape plan or a lighting plan. They know that that would be a condition of approval. It's not necessarily required to be submitted upfront. There is an existing septic system and an existing well. We did put a condition of approval, that they would have to get approval from Central District Health for any changes, and make sure that the septic system was capable of handling the waste. Also, with Idaho Department of Water Resources, because the structure is so much larger than what was originally proposed. The Meridian Fire did have some issues, and I believe the fire chief is here tonight to testify, or is on weblogs, to address any of the fire concerns. He did have, you know, issues with that large of a structure and not adequate water. So I did do some research on the availability of water. So this is the site right here. Pollard Estates Subdivision has been approved by the City of Meridian for 75 lots, and Suez Water would be the one that would provide that water. But they don't have water service at this time. The Suez Water said that they are working with Pollard Estates and Fairborn Estates just to the east for a booster station or a well to provide water for their developments. So this site in the county does not have the availability to connect currently with water, but it's coming in the future for this development. So staff is recommending approval based on the fire department approval. We do have conditions of approval to, for the applicant to receive approval from the fire department before we would totally approve their project. So I can stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Mr. Davidson, Commissioner Kenyon?
Chair, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And good evening. So can you, when you said that Suez Water will be available in the near future, what's the near future? Can you give us kind of a little bit of a timeframe?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, Suez said they don't know at this point because they, they're in negotiations for either a booster station or a well in that specific area. The Pollard Estates subdivision was approved, but it also is conditioned that they work with Suez for the water. There is sewer coming from the City of Meridian to that site, but they don't have a timeline If they were to request water, they would have to annex into the City of Meridian because they would be the ones that would provide the sewer.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Appreciate that. That's all I have for right now, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I assume the fire concern is exterior fire. The interior would have state-of-the-art sprinkler systems, is my assumption.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I think we would let the Meridian Fire Department address that. I'm not sure if, I don't believe they're asking for sprinklers, but they would be the ones that would address that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions from the commission to the staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is the applicant on, oh, here we have the applicant. When you're at the podium, you can remove your mask.
Okay. All right. If you'd like. Can I go either way?
What's that?
Can I go either way, on or off?
It's up to you.
I'm more comfortable on, so I'm used to it. We work in a manufacturing environment, lots of people like this.
You hear you well enough, that's fine.
If you can't, then stop me. You have my slides. I went Franklin Sensors. We make, yeah, we're the developer of Meridian Research Park. We're the, we are in the building and it's on there. We developed it. We make stud finders for finding studs in walls. We make one that's better than anything else. It's kind of our own invention. We invented a better stud finder, basically. Traditional stud finders, you have to go back and forth across a wall, and they bounce them, and they have a lot of rules, and they're really frustrating, and they don't work very well. We created one that you basically can just put, it had lots of sensors in it, which requires a more complex circuitry, but allows you to instantly find a stud. You can instantly put on, instantly put on a wall, and instantly find the stud. Am I talking too fast?
Yes.
Okay.
You can hold just a minute. I want to make sure that Karen Garcia and Joe Bonjourney are on and can hear.
Yeah, I'm here.
Karen?
Perfect.
Okay. And where's Joe?
I am here.
Okay.
I hope you can hear me.
All right, good. So as long as you can hear. And yeah, if you can slow it down just a bit.
Okay.
Just for me.
I was going through the introductory stuff a little fast.
All right.
Yeah. So anyway, yeah, we make a product that's much better than anything else out there, and we sell it at, do you have my?
Do you have?
Yeah. It'll help to see visuals.
Did he state his name for the record?
Could I say my name for the record? Is that your question? My name is David DeRoe.
Yeah.
I'm with Franklin, I'm the president of Franklin Sensors. Founder, president.
Dave DeRoe, right?
Yeah. It's spelled D-O-R-R-O-U-G-H.
Okay. Thank you.
What do you have it listed in?
Not those ones. Wait, this is mine, this is mine.
Okay.
But it should be single file, scroll down.
We need to make sure we get a copy of that for the record.
Put it by date.
Diana, you're gonna want to wear a mask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I forgot the mask reminder.
Do you have one of your sensors to show us?
I should have brought one. I got an image.
While we're waiting, I can show you one.
Karen's, Karen's, yeah. She's at the office right now.
So, here's one of our sensors. So, this is just using my hand. You see here, it's sensing the edge and the center of stud simultaneously. So that's the difference in our stud finders is. No calibration's required, instantly detects, shows you the edge and the center simultaneously. We're the number one rated stud finder on the market.
You can click on the next slide. That's kind of what it looks like. And it is the number one rated stud finder everywhere it's sold. Everyone, you look at Amazon, every place, everyone reviews it. It's a very, very popular stud finder. And we've grown. We started with just myself, and we've grown. We now have over five, over a hundred full-time employees. This is a hundred American jobs. We're very proud that we are creating American jobs rather than most people, most people in our type of business readily just ship jobs to China, that's the easy way to do it. We're very proud that we're here creating American jobs, doing our best. We have thirteen patents and more patents pending for new developments. Like I say, we sell to all of the big players in hardware. Walmart, it's actually sold at Walmart under a different brand, but we make it on Costco, Lowe's, HomeDepot.com, Sam's, BJ's, like at Costco on the East Coast, H.I. We're everywhere that, everywhere and growing as people put our product in stores, they pick up more and more units of our products to carry. They add more and more SKUs to their lineup. So, we do very, we do very well. We, more than ninety-nine percent of our products are sold outside of Idaho, and about twenty percent are sold outside of the U.S. So I believe we bring a lot of dollars into Idaho, and we enhance the economy here. As Diana mentioned, we have two on the next slide. This is what's been approved already, our existing building, which is, which we moved into about three years ago. It's the phase one building. And when we got that approval, we also had got approval for the phase two building, which Diana mentioned. We didn't specify at the time whether it was a one-story or two-story, I guess. By default, that becomes a one-story building. But we really need the space. It may be much, much better for us if that was a two-story building instead of building the already approved one-story building. At the same time, it works better to increase the size of the footprint a little bit. It's about a twelve percent larger footprint. It fits very well on the site. So our, really, you can switch to the next slide. This is kind of the modification. Really what we're asking for today is just to modify the footprint, make it twelve percent bigger, and to put a second story on it. Rather than that, we're, I want to keep the rest of it the same. You switch to the next slide. This is the master site plan. It shows our existing building, the phase two building, and the phase three building. We are not asking for approval of the phase three building. That's what happened in the future, when city water, in the future. That's not something we're looking for right now. We're only looking for the phase two building, just to be clear on that. But this is the whole site plan. One thing, switch to the next slide. One thing that's nice about this development is it does create reverse commute jobs. If you look at Meridian, most of the traffic in the morning is heading east into Boise or south to the freeways, heading in that kind of direction. We're kind of where that red star on there. So we kind of create reverse commute jobs, and it makes a better community for all of us. It balances out our roads and keeps things balanced and keeps traffic flowing well. Only nice about it. Next slide. This is, this is, just so you kind of get some context of what we look like. This is our building. This is our phase one building. We built it as an upscale office building, has very large windows, very, we have upscale, nice little accents on the building. We intended this to be an upscale development. And our phase two building will be similar. It'll be, it won't be exactly the same, but it'll have very similar, it'll fit together. They'll look like they belong together. It'll be very similar, and they'll look like, yeah, they'll look like they match and belong together. As far as utilities go, all the utilities are on site. There's a gas line that actually runs down the property line. We tapped into for the first building. We also tapped into that for the second building. There's already been electrical drop, there's a sector box already in place, we already pulled the electrical drop, it's already there. The next slide. As far as sewer and septic, the septic field, this thing was already designed with the intention of two buildings, and with the idea that it would ultimately be tied into public sewer. So, the septic field is already in place, and it's actually sized to support both buildings. When we built it, the, yeah, it was sized with the Central District of Health, I think that's who it was, or DEQ, that it would be, it was designed specifically for both buildings. So it's already sized for the phase two building. You'll notice that there's already the dotted line in front of the building, and that's actually a line that feeds down to the phase two building, that's already in place. You also notice there's a line, these are the sewer lines. There's also a line that goes out to the street already. So there's already a line that goes out of the street, there's a manhole on the street. There's already a plan to decommission this when public sewer comes in. So everything's set up, just, it was just kind of a temporary, temporarily we can use the sewer until public utilities come in. As far as Meridian, this is, as far as the use goes, before we started the project, we got approval from the City of Meridian, and this is in harmony with their usage for this area. This is kind of a letter from the City of Meridian stating that. We also got approval from the City of Meridian as far as using sewer and well as a temporary until city services arrive. And this is just a letter endorsing that. As far as water goes, I think there's a, might be a little bit of communication on water, because we actually have a very high-capacity well on site. This is a, the well that we have is, it's a former irrigation well that used to irrigate about a hundred acres of land. It's got a shaft about that big around, and it has, we put a fifty horsepower motor down in there, a fifty horsepower motor down in there, which requires about forty kilowatts, is about forty thousand watts of power. And it delivers already, delivers water to our fire hydrant. When we tested the fire hydrant, you open that up, it shoots a stream of water about that big, blast, a stream of water that big, like thirty feet out. It's a very high-capacity well. But having said that, it supports, it supports seven hundred and twenty gallons a minute. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that. It's also been tested multiple times by DEQ. When you have more than twenty-five people using a well, it's required to be a public source well. And we went through that a few years ago, through the whole process. They do regular tests, there's a whole battery of tests when we started, and then we do quarterly tests, and it's always had no problem. Then as far as the seven hundred and twenty gallons a minute, that's, it's a lot of water, but it's not the ideal amount of water for putting out a fire, as Meridian Fire will tell you. Their ideal is to have fifteen hundred gallons a minute. They have given an okay for this project with a couple caveats. And the caveat, one of the caveats is that we get a letter from our insurance carrier, they know that we have less than the ideal amount of water. Another caveat, which we got from the, actually the prior deputy chief fire marshal, was that we don't use the whole space for storage. In our building, we have a seventeen-foot ceiling. From the floor to the ceiling, we have seventeen feet. And he asked, well, you have roughly half the amount of water, just use half the amount of space. That's what we do. We don't stack boxes above about the halfway point. We don't, use half the space because we have roughly half the amount of water. So those are, I think those are the only two caveats. Yeah, the caveat, we get a letter from our insurance carrier, they know this condition, and that we don't stack boxes very high, and that, he also asked that we don't do the phase three building until city services arrive. So, and the idea was partly behind this is that what we have, both these buildings are roughly the same size. The phase one building and the phase two building are both roughly about the same size, because we can, and so it's roughly the same width with each building. With that kind of logic, they were okay with approving this project. Wanted you to be aware of what's going on there. The next slide kind of shows what's happening with the adjacent property. They have proposed a development, and when they're developing, they've developed, they're really kind of put a two, four-story hospital in there, and some four-story office buildings, some two-story flex space-type buildings. And the reason I bring this up is because it, because it shows that a two-story building really does kind of fit within what's kind of being thought about for the adjacent property. As far as their plans here, though, they've kind of thrown these plans out, but they don't have anything, they're not moving forward right now. They, there's no sewer water brought through there. They want to keep, they don't want something going through there right now, because they want to keep a blank slate. They have the land for sale, and when they get the right buyer, they're gonna like, they want the site to be flexible, they can do however they want. They don't want a pipe going through there, or sewer going through there yet, until they know who their buyer is and what they want to develop. So what we're looking for is just, we know eventually this does connect to sewer water. We're just asking to temporarily, to allow us to use the well and the septic temporarily until the city services arrive. So just to make it a lot of words, final slide, just maybe a little simple. What we're really asking to do is modify what's already been approved, let us increase the footprint by about twelve percent, and build it with a second story. And I will stand for questions.
Okay. Are there questions of the applicant from the commission?
Always, Chair.
Always.
Well, thank you, David. It's DeRoe?
Yeah, that's how I say it.
Okay, David. Thank you. First of all, I just want to say I really appreciate your business here and what you do. Your company is the type of company that we like to see. So I think that it's great what you're accomplishing here. I just want to double-check some figures. So, I think our staff told us that you, this would be adding approximately one hundred and sixty-seven people. Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct. I think, I think we, I think away, there's some, I think when we, I think, I'd have to look at, we want to add as many as the septic will allow, as they'll allow us to connect with the septic. I'm not sure, I'm not, I can't confirm that number right now.
That's a question mark.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then, in our report, it shows that the water supply needed for this particular configuration, having the second story, would require one thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute. And what you're stating here, and what it shows, is that the existing water only produces seven hundred and twenty gallons per minute.
Right.
And so, talk to us about this, what we're seeing is this is putting potential employees and firefighters at risk, and I'll have the Meridian Fire Department address this as well.
Right.
But have you had conversations with the Meridian Fire Department? How stacking boxes to a certain level doesn't get me where I need to go? We need to mitigate risk and make sure that everyone is safe, and that if there were a fire on the second floor, there's absolutely no question, it could be put out in the amount of time that meets our standards.
Right.
So, I need you to address that for me, because I'm looking at this thinking, yikes, this just looks like something that I can't go for at this point, it seems premature. So, please help me understand.
Yeah, no, I mean, well, first of all, seven hundred and twenty gallons a minute is a tremendous amount of water. It's just, I mean, it is a tremendous amount of water. It's a lot of water. We'll have fire sprinklers, we'll have a fire alarm, we'll have all of the things that are required in a building. It does have, I mean, our existing building, for example, we have five fire exits. Every single person is within, is within, you know, a hundred feet of an exit at all times. You can't get further than that from an exit. If there was a fire, and it is, and it's not like this building where you have like lots of rooms and corridors, we're basically an open floor. We have bathrooms, a few conference rooms, and it's basically an open floor. If there was a fire, someone saw smoke, everyone would be out in fifteen seconds.
From a second story?
Second story, I guess you'd have. Second story, you'd have, yeah, I guess second story, you'd have, you'd have two, yeah, you'd have two exits you'd go down. So I mean, you have two different staircases you would be able to go down. It is, if worst came to worst, it is, we're not like a concrete building, we do have windows all the way around. You could, certainly a chair through a window would get you out of the building in that ultimate catfucks scenario where you can't get down either staircase. But because it is an open floor, you're gonna know about a fire instantly and be able to get out very, very quick. You're not gonna be off in some office somewhere where the fire's happening in another part of the building.
Thank you. And I'll follow up with the Meridian Fire Department.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does Commissioner Davidson have any questions?
Did you bring any pictures of the interior of the building to, for us to?
The floor plan, I did not. I could get them, but I...
And is there sprinklers inside, fire sprinklers inside the building?
There are existing building, there is fire sprinklers, and in the phase two building there would also be fire sprinklers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner DeRoe, what year did you start your business?
It's about nine years ago.
Nine years ago?
Yeah.
And you built it?
Started with one person, working by himself for about two and a half years, and finally took it to a trade show, and everyone loved it, and then hired one guy, and started building with teenagers in my house for about a year, and then tell my kids, my wife can tell you stories. And then we, we've just been growing, been growing, and we take it to places, and just everywhere we go, it just keeps selling more and more and more. We've had tremendous, tremendous growth, especially the past year, and we're very compressed right now. We're very, these are very, yeah, we're very, we ship a lot of inventory offsite. We have one guy that just makes sure we can, you know, make sure that we can rearrange the inventory. Yeah, we need more space.
And how many employees do you have now?
About a hundred and ten. I'd have to look at, except in that ballpark. And we work in two shifts, we work day and a swing shift, because we don't have square footage.
That's a tremendous growth, I might add, for nine years.
It's a great company, yeah.
From zero, idea in your head, to a hundred and ten employees today, that's, my hat's off to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You mentioned that the fire department has preliminarily approved with a couple of conditions. One of the conditions was that you have a letter from your insurance carrier that they would accept to insure you with a lighter water load. Is that correct?
Right.
Did you get that?
We have that on our existing, we have that on our existing building, and they have no issue, had no issue with that on our existing building, because it's the same issue. And they had absolutely no issue doing that. They understand, you know, they had, I haven't asked them about the second building yet.
Was that what the fire department asked for, was an additional letter, or just supplement to the one you already have, or?
Yeah, it would be a supplementary letter.
And you have arranged for that, or?
Yeah, that was, that's a condition of approval, that we provide that letter.
Oh, condition of approval from the staff, that you provide that letter, that you are covered, and does that cover, does that letter, will that cover additional liability that you may have if there's personal damage from people on your staff?
We have insurance to cover all reasonable, yeah, reasonable conditions.
Okay. And you've discussed this with the Meridian Fire Department, and they're happy with the supplemental letter that you'll get.
Right. It would, we have insurance to cover all reasonable, yeah, reasonable conditions.
Okay, and, and you've discussed this with the Meridian Fire Department, and they're happy with the, with the supplemental letter that you'll get.
Right.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions, or issues to be brought up by the staff with the applicant?
Not at this time, but after we hear from Meridian Fire Department, possibly at that time.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we allowed to recall a witness after another witness has testified, if we need to? Yes, Mr. Kenyon, okay. Yes, you can. Now, we have down here that Karen, and that's, is that Karen right there? Are you going to provide any additional testimony, Karen?
Yes, I will.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
I hear you just fine.
Well, yes, thank you. So again, Karen Garcia, it's a pleasure to be here. One of the things I just wanted to address a little bit deeper is our growth and our necessity, our necessity for the building. I'm gonna do a little aside, just because there was a question, I did want to make sure I clarified that our building will be tilt construction, and therefore it's a non-flammable surface, so I did want to not bring that up. But in regards to our growth, in the last 18 months, we have increased our volume by 400%. And that, as you mentioned, Commissioner, that is, that is staggering, that is a lot of growth, that's a lot of, a lot of contributed to the growth at Walmart. We'd already been in Walmart and done some great business, but we added two additional items into that planogram. We also gained all the volume, all the steadfasters at Harbor Freight are ours, and then continual Costco volume, and then the additional volume that we get from, from our customers as we continue to grow. So hence really the need, and why we have an urgency for the building. As David mentioned, right now, and you may be familiar with his name, is Dixon Container, who's one of our suppliers. We move a lot of our inventory offsite because we simply need this space. And so, that additional space is so important to us. One of the things we also addressed, and how important it is to us, the one things that we take a lot of pride in, is that we're made in the United States, that we're made right here. And we have local jobs that we, we support, but also we support other companies. I mentioned Dixon Container. Dixon Container creates all our, our boxes and our packaging that you would see at Walmart, you'd see at Home Depot, that you would see at Costco. High-tech color, iSpot Creative, Red Couch Creative, KC Levin Video Production, Taxed and Printing, Bryant Ideas, all of the demo walls that you see at Costco are built right here, are made by a local company. Max Palettes, all the palettes that go throughout the country and internationally, they come from a local supplier. Micro molding, we have some of the local supplier that does printing on our plastics. Then, of course, the food trucks, we always enjoy that. And that's not to mention the national company that reps, the UPS, the FedEx, USPS. So just in, in conclusion, what I'd just like to say is that we really do have a need for this building. We're growing quickly, and in order to maximize our growth potential, we need to have that space so we continue to bring jobs here to Idaho, to the United States, and to Ada County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Does any of the, do commissioners have a question for the...
Not at this time.
You have a question?
No.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that. Do we have Joe Bonjorno?
Bonjorno.
Bonjorno.
Bonjorno, yeah.
You're up, Joe.
Sounds kind of cliche, doesn't it?
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. The only follow-up I really have, pretty much what David said, is, is pretty much along what we had talked about. When it comes down to it, the project does not meet fire flow. The original project, his original building that they're in right now, did not meet fire flow. So Chief Palmer, the previous fire marshal, asked for him to do some testing. The letter I have states his current well will do 650 gallons a minute. And with that, if we subtract out some sprinkler heads, and leaving us 250 gallons for hose lines, the previous chief felt that as long as he got an insur, a letter from his insurance company stating that they realized that the building does not meet fire flow, it does not meet, you know, so it doesn't meet international building, or fire code, and it doesn't meet NFA standards for sprinkler systems, then they would be okay with approving the project. So we did have a letter in the file, Diana also has a copy of it, that shows that their insurance company at the time understood that they didn't meet fire flow, and so we have that letter. So as it stands now, when David contacted me about building the second building, Phase 2, because of what has transpired in the past, I felt comfortable enough that if he was able to produce a second letter from his insurance company stating that both buildings don't meet fire code, and they understand that, then I would be okay with them moving forward. Phase 3 was a no-go until we actually have water coming. WH Pacific just came to the city within the last two weeks. They have a project to his north that they want to build, and so they're going to be bringing water through to that property. So I asked them to contact David to put them in, in cahoots with each other, to make sure that we get water to his property as quickly as, as we can. So, so as it stands, the, the project doesn't meet fire, fire code, the sprinklers are, are okay, that, that helps definitely a ton with the fire flow. But as it stands, it just, it, it doesn't meet code as it sits. So, but again, as I stated, if he can produce a letter from his insurance company stating that they understand both buildings don't meet fire, fire flow requirements, then I would be okay with him moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonjorno. Do we have questions from...
You could just call me chief, Mr. Chairman, that'd be easier than...
Okay, chief.
Bonjorno.
Okay, Chief Bonjorno. And do we have questions from the commission?
Please.
Commissioner Kenyon.
Chief Joe, how's that?
There you go.
So, can you repeat, you said there's, there's an adjacent property or property nearby that's bringing water through. Again, I want to make sure it's the same property that was presented to this board earlier in the presentation by staff. Could you name that property, and if you have an idea of when that water will be coming through, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, that project, I don't have a name for it, they just presented it to us in a pre-application a couple weeks ago. It was Bonnie from WH Pacific. I don't know if they gave us a timeframe of when they wanted that project to come through. Where the, I don't know if somebody can bring up the map, I don't know if Diana can bring it up, but where the cul, there's a cul-de-sac just to the north of David's property, that project that they presented was to the north of that cul-de-sac.
Okay, and do you remember the timeframe? When they thought they had water?
I don't, they did not give us a timeframe, they just presented it, we did a pre-application with them.
Okay, thank you. And then follow-up question, if I may, Chairman Beck?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not so concerned with an insurance certificate, I mean, basically if the owner is willing to take the risk, and it's his risk to take. What I am concerned with is people's safety. And according to your own report, I'm gonna read right out of your report, it says that this proposed commercial development does not have resources that are adequate to supply service. The risk factors include firefighting in multi-story buildings and lack of fire flow for the building. This entails a greater risk for the occupants as well as first responders. Fire, life safety systems, and occupant training are critical for this development. And then down below, it says the applicant cannot meet fire flow requirements for this project. So, having this in front of the board puts us in a really awkward position, you know, how it may meet code, but if it doesn't meet safety requirements. Can you talk us through how you would mitigate these risks that you have in your own report?
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, a lot of that is gonna have to happen with him, as far as, with David, the applicant, with his safety plans and the way he conducts his business. You know, we will be more than happy to come in and, and work with him on safety escape plans and stuff like that. I believe you, you made the comment earlier, you know, the, the life safety of the occupants, and, and thank you very, very much for mentioning my firefighters as well, because it, it is an issue. Again, I, I'm not saying this is ideal at all, but because my, my thought was, and when I talked with Tom, who's our plans examiner, his existing building and the current building that he wants to build are roughly the same size. So with a fire in a sprinkler building, typically the fire is kept under control with about four to 10 heads. And with his current pump that he has, he can meet that capacity. So, so that's why I was okay, as long as the insurance company understood that he still doesn't meet fire flow. So, again, I guess I was offering the goodwill of allowing what had previously happened and moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you. I have another question, follow-up question for you, and you may not be able to answer it, but in one of our reports on Exhibit A, page 8, number 5, conditions of approval, says that the applicant or the owner shall construct a pond with a pump to comply with the fire flow requirements. Has the applicant discussed this, this pump and this pond and pump with you, and do we know, could this board understand here tonight what that size of pond and pump would look
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I am not sure about a pond. I know Diana and I were talking about a pond on another project, a pond was not discussed on this project.
Well, I guess then I'll ask if I may, our staff member. Diane, can you tell us about number 5 that I just mentioned?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. The applicant actually sent me an email saying that one of the ways they could try to help the fire flow was to construct a pond. And so if he's gonna construct one, we want it approved and have the fire department involved in that. He did not submit any plans, he just kind of put that out there, that he would be willing to construct a pond.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then, again, that would have to be 1,750 gallons per minute.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioner, that, that pond would have to be massive. I mean, I would have to sit down and do all the calculations, but it would be a very large pond.
What's very large? Swimming pool size, five, 10 swimming pools?
I mean, you gotta take 1,750 gallons a minute times two hours.
Okay, so I just want to know, is that feasible or not? If it's a feasible solution?
No.
No, it's not, okay, thank you.
No, it's not.
Okay, I don't have any further questions for Deputy Bonjorno. Thank you.
It's Chief Bonjorno.
Chief Diane, yes, there you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hello, chief.
Hi there.
My question would be, is there any other remedial actions the applicant could take, you know, pending the increased water flow that might increase safety? And just off the top of my head, I'm thinking about like ladders installed on the side of the building, each second-story window. It might not be aesthetically pleasing, but it would be a safety increase while they're waiting for the increased water flow. Do you, do you have any ideas on that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I do not believe there would be anything, because the building he would build would, would, as far as exiting requirements, would meet fire code, it would have to meet fire code and building code. And exiting requirements, you know, as far as exiting from second stories, there has to be two ways out, you know, there has to be an exit every 100 feet. All, all of that stuff will be covered with his architect, and when the building is designed, everything would be covered. Again, there, there would be some opportunities for, you know, my public education specialists to come out and work with him on evacuation plans and planning. When I, in my report that Commissioner Kenyon mentioned, that's what we talk about, is, you know, having those emergency action plans in place to where if a fire does happen, and then practicing, you know, like we used to do in schools, exiting the building, doing fire drills, whatever. That's the type of stuff that would, would benefit the most, other than what the building code and the fire code would require.
Thank you.
Chief, I do have a couple of questions for you, if you can answer, consider those questions. You indicated that the Meridian Fire Department was willing to approve this project if the applicant could provide sufficient evidence from their insurance carrier, that the insurance carrier would cover the, the building, and I, I assume the occupants as well as the building, under the current condition, the current water flow, et cetera, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, that is correct.
So that satisfies you in terms of, of the Meridian Fire Department's liability?
Yes, sir.
The Karen Garcia indicated to us that the building was constructed of non-flammable material, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have not seen the plans, I don't know how it's being built. I've only seen the site plan.
If it was constructed of non-flammable materials, does that change any of the, any of the equation that we're, we are to consider?
It, Mr., sorry, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm used to mayor and council. That would, it would definitely help, because it would be a non-combustible material like Ms. Garcia mentioned.
And would that not mitigate the risk, then?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't mitigate it 100%, but it would definitely lower it, for sure.
Okay, all right, well, I don't have any, any further questions. Any further questions of the, of the fire chief from, any further questions of, do you have any further questions?
No.
Did you want to recall a witness to ask a question?
I'll leave that to yours or Commissioner Kenyon's discretion.
Well, I don't, but if you do...
No, I don't.
It's up to you, you do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to add the presentation by the applicant into the record as Exhibit Number 20.
Okay, without objection, it's added, thank you. Okay, we will now close the public hearing on, let's see here, there's two applications, And close the public hearing on application 202002477MSPAltourConsulting. The hearing is closed. Now we have discussion amongst the commission. It's the pleasure of the commission.
You want to start, Ryan, or you want me to?
Yeah, I can just sit down.
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is a tough one. I really want to help out the applicant, I think that the business is a really good business, and I'm trying really hard to help you get this done. However, there's so many caveats in the report regarding risk that... However, there's so many caveats in the report regarding risk that I'm just feeling really uncomfortable from a liability perspective from the county. But instead of denying this, I'm kind of leaning towards, there's a couple of things in my mind that I think we could, that would help me make a decision anyway. And one of those is, I'd like to know with this addition, how many people, how many additional people we're adding? How many people are we talking about on each floor? That would be really helpful. So I'm, I'm wanting to possibly table this to number one, find out the, the number, I know it's going to be ballpark, but I'd like to know that, first floor, second floor. I also want to know from Suez, I would like us to reach out to Suez, who would have a really good indication on the timelines. You're so close to being annexed in that this would not be an issue at all. We wouldn't even have to be hearing it. And if it's within like, you know, four months or five, six months, then I, I want to know that. I really want to know from Suez's perspective how close we are. And then I also want to know on the, the non-flammable building, I'd like to be able to have enough information here in order to determine whether that is flammable or not flammable. And it's been closed, sir, so you won't be able to testify.
I didn't get a chance to rebuttal. I just wanted to ask that question of her. I didn't want to interrupt you. But I haven't had a chance to rebuttal. I wanted to address some of these points, but I would sit down.
And then fourth, and I guess we could make these all conditions of approval, but I think it's better just to table it and have them come back and see if they satisfy these. The fourth one would be to have that updated certificate of insurance, from the insurance that is specifically on this building. So those are four things that I would like to see and understand before I make a decision because I certainly don't want to turn them down if we can get around this in a way that puts everybody not at risk, but in, in a safe and secure position and environment. And maybe that giant swimming pool isn't too big, that pond, so it gives, gives applicants some time to go back and look at that as well.
Commissioner Kenyon, did you have a time certain on your tabling?
You know, I would lean on staff to ask them how long they think it would take to gather this information from the applicant and from Suez and, and the insurance certificates, what that usually takes. I wish we would have had it tonight. And then submitting the number of folks, I would imagine two to four weeks would be fine, right? Can you give us a date?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, I think we could table it to the next, to February hearing.
Okay. So gentlemen, that's where I'm leaning because I really want to help them and see if we can't get this, you know, going. But again, if it's a few months away from Suez and they can give us a kind of a ballpark, I would just as soon have them go ahead and annex in when appropriate than try to go through all the hoops we seem to have to go through tonight to make this a safe project. So that's where I'm leaning is just table it and see if you can't gather more information.
Is there any discussion from Commissioner Davidson?
Mr. Chairman, so are we talking exactly one month till the next hearing?
What's the next hearing date?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that appears to be February 10th.
It's a little less.
A little less than a month.
And that would be the first available opportunity or that's as much time as staff feels we need to gather the documents.
I, I suppose, I would be inclined to, to accept your, your recommendation, but I, I wouldn't want to cause any further delay on the applicant. I mean, we should be able to, to collect that information. So I feel comfortable already if, if the Meridian Fire Department feels comfortable. I don't know that we have to have a higher standard than the Meridian Fire Department, Meridian Fire Department, but if that makes all, all parties happy, I wouldn't object to, to table this to the next, put this number one on our agenda at the next hearing. I would have no objection with that. And I think that would work with the applicant, would it? I think, but that's what I, I would favor as well, to get that additional information. We had the, the, you can go ahead and state your motion if you'd like.
Okay, and I just, also I'd like to make sure that on our executive summary from the fire department, that I don't think they are comfortable with it. I think this executive summary, in my mind, when I read it, it's really clear. I think what we heard from Chief tonight is if the insurance company is okay with it, then somehow they are, but that's not how I read this. And so I would encourage them also to go back and take a look if this needs to be revised by the time we get back in, in session. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to table project numbers 201503899DAM, V202002447MSP. And I'm going to recommend that we table this to February 10th in order to gather the information and insurance, updated insurance certificate on this building specifically, update report if there is one from Meridian Fire District, a statement from Suez as to their anticipated place, putting a septic tank in place for that property. And then a layout of the first and second floor on how many people, employees will be on the first and the second floor of this new building. And then additionally, the construction of the building, both I think inside and out would be helpful, mainly on the outside, looking, what we're looking for is the non-flammable. That would be very helpful. So that's my motion, as lengthy as that is.
Did we get all that? I might add that those are, are items that we're asking to look at, they're not necessarily, we'll have to consider the whole application with those additional items. Is that not correct?
That's correct, yep.
So, so that's the motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. I don't think we need to review it, but all in favor?
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know the propriety of recalling a witness or talking to a witness after the public hearing's been closed. If there was, I would, I would ask the, the witness, you know, what, it would pose an undue burden or an extreme hardship if, if we were to delay. But I, I don't think a month is, you know.
Well, and that's the reason I asked for it at specific times, so that wouldn't, it wouldn't be an undue burden on the applicant. He, he could get the information that, that's been asked for. And again, I might add, this is not a staff requirement. This is, this is what we're asking for. And so it may or may not be a condition of the approval when we get, we'll just consider the, the information, correct?
Yeah, and I think the, you know, the applicant could possibly even include, you know, list of any flammable materials inside the building. I don't know how much paper or cardboard is, you know, I assume with the packaging, but maybe some inventory might be helpful, some additional pictures and whatever you can think of. But I'm certainly inclined to, if you provide that material, grant the application.
Yes.
I'm not sure that, that that would satisfy the, the intent of the motion anyway.
Not for me.
I don't think it would, but, or I'd be happy to do that, but I don't think it would satisfy the intent of the motion.
Just go ahead and make sure.
Sure. Yeah, we understand, we understand that's an option, but I don't think it would satisfy the intent of the motion. And 30 days shouldn't be an, or less than 30 days. It should not be an undue burden. I wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine because I am, am reluctant to turn this thing down. This is a remarkable girl. You, you should be proud of it and I'm proud of you for, for having your company this way. Anyway, if there's any further discussion on motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The ayes have it. We'll see you at our next hearing. Thank you.
Chair, good luck.
Was, was the next item, was that removed? Was the next item removed?
We need to take it up and then staff will withdraw it, but we need to open it up.
Okay. We'll open the hearing on 202002600V, Melissa Amber Comby. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the applicant has withdrawn their application at this time and staff will be working on what they're going to propose. They kind of changed their, what they proposed from the original, which would be a substantial difference and we would have had to renotice and go through this again. So we felt that withdrawing that application gives us a fresh, fresh start and we'll work with the applicant on what she's going to do next.
Okay, thank you. We will then close the public hearing on applicant 202002600V, Melissa Amber Comby. Hearing's closed. We don't need to take any action, so we'll, we'll open the public hearing on 202002609VAC, Sawtooth Land Surveying. Would the staff care to start?
Yep.
Are you ready, sir?
Yes, it's just taking a little bit longer here.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2020002609VAC is a vacation of 0.13 acres of land that was incorrectly included in the previously recorded boundary of crossroads subdivision. And so the affected parcels are the five lots right here that are along the western edge of the Crossman subdivision. So the properties are located at 3501 South Al Rio Avenue, 3507 South Al Rio Avenue, 3515 South Al Rio Avenue, 3521 South Al Rio Avenue, and 12599 West Brentor Street in Section 28 Township, three north, range one east. And they consist of approximately 0.89 acres. Apologies about that. The Crossman subdivision was approved through project number 201800337S. The final plat for the subdivision was signed by the board on January 15th, 2020. When the crossroads subdivision was plotted, 0.013 acres of the neighbor's property to the west was incorrectly included within the subdivision. This vacation will vacate the 0.013 acres of land that was incorrectly included with the subdivision. The amended plat was submitted under the, correcting the subdivision boundary for the five affected lots. The amended plat is currently under review and once the review is complete, it will be brought before you for your approval and signature. Staff under this application complies with the county code and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission or the staff?
No, sir.
Questions?
No.
Thank you, sir. Is Joshua Beach? Hello, Joshua. You're, you're allowed if you want to, so we can hear you better, to remove your face cover.
Love to.
Thank you.
So Ms. Josh Beach, I work for Sawtooth Land Surveying at 2030 South Washington Avenue in Emmett. So we're bringing this before you. As Brent said, there was an error. Our firm did the original survey for the developer back in, I believe, 2017 maybe even. And the adjoining property has done a more recent survey and saw the error there. So we've worked with staff to adjust that and it's kind of a new, new process for us. So we're, we, we worked with them and they've indicated to us what we need to do to, to fix that part of that was to come before you this evening and vacate a portion from a previously recorded subdivision plat. So hopeful that, hopefully accept our apology for making the mistake and move forward with readjusting those, just those, those five lots on the western boundary, giving that, not really giving that property on our back as property, but incorrectly including it on the recorded subdivision for Crosswinds.
Thank you, Joshua. Is there any questions from the commission to the applicant?
Chair, I just want to make sure, staff or applicant, that no one is opposed to this.
That is correct. And ma'am, and Mr. Chairman, Josh's presentation, which is up here, that'll be Exhibit number 31.
It will be included for the record. You have any questions, Commissioner Davidson?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I will then close the public hearing on application 202002609VAC, Sawtooth Land Survey. The hearing, public hearing being closed, is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Not for me. I'm ready to make a motion or Commissioner Davidson can make it.
I'll defer to you, Commissioner Kenyon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead if there's no further discussion then. And I'll make a motion to approve application number 202002609VAC, a vacation of 0.013 acres of land that was incorrectly included in the previously recorded boundary of this subdivision, based on the findings of, the findings of fact, excuse me, and the conclusions of law that were contained in the staff report and the testimony that we heard here tonight. I think that we'll go ahead and we'll prove it.
Have a second to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Is there discussion amongst the commission on the motion?
I'm good, Chair.
Hearing, hearing no discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Applicants approved. Thank you.
We're forth and vag.
We will now have before the commission, we'll open the public hearing for application 201601258DAM, Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community Periodic Evaluation. Is Todd here? Todd? No, we'll have, we'll have staff report, excuse me, I'm sorry. We'll have staff report first.
Chairman, Commissioners, before you, we have application 201601258-D-A-DM. This is the Dry Creek Ranch 2020 Periodic Evaluation. Is it, can I remove my mask? Is that okay?
Yeah.
No, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Before I begin, I just wanted to inform you, I'll, I'll have a report here and then I'm going to bring up the survey results that we conducted with the residents. This is a two-year periodic evaluation and review of the Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community. This review has been conducted to determine if Dry Creek Ranch is developing in conformance with the Dry Creek Ranch Development Plan and to satisfy code requirements. This review is based on the goals and objectives contained in the Dry Creek Ranch Development Plan and is a review of the development agreement. Dry Creek Ranch is located within portions of Section 25, 35, and 36 of Township Five North, Range One East. Dry Creek Ranch is scheduled to be built out over the next Dry Creek Ranch is scheduled to be built out over the next twelve years or so from now in six larger phases. Each phase consists of multiple sub-phases, and currently five sub-phases in phase number one have been final platted. The Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community has been developed in substantial conformance to its plans and development agreement. The periodic evaluation is a requirement through the condition of approval number eighty-five of the Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community. The purpose of the periodic evaluation is to monitor, to monitor the development of Dry Creek Ranch and report to the commission and the board every two years after the recordation of the first final plat in the plan community and to, as to the progress and anticipate a long-term viability of the plan community and analysis of compliance to the Dry Creek Ranch Development Plan. The periodic evaluation consists of the director consulting with the applicant and property owners within the plan community prior to preparing the report. So staff consulted with the developer, who is Boise Hunter Homes, and then sent out a resident survey, survey to property owners and residents in Dry Creek Ranch. In addition to staff reaching out to, you know, the residents, also multiple public service agencies were contacted for a comment. And I'm gonna pull up the survey results here, just a second. And I'm not sure why it's, oh, there we go. Zoom in here so we can all see. A little too far. Okay. As I stated, this, this survey was conducted to the Dry Creek Ranch residents, and we, we asked them multiple questions that directly related to the goals of Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community. So if you're okay with it, I'm just gonna kinda go through question by question. I can explain, you know, each question, how it relates to the goals, and then if you have any questions, feel free to ask. So the first question we asked, do you live in Dry Creek Ranch? Yes. Almost everybody that answered, or not almost, but everybody that answered said they own property as opposed to renting. The second question here was, how long have you lived in Dry Creek? Looks like the majority of folks here have lived there less than a year. So Dry Creek Ranch is a fairly new plan community. We're still in our first larger phase here, so that's why folks have only lived here for about a year or so. So question three was, this was kind of the overall goal here of the development of Dry Creek Ranch. So this question here, you know, they're asking the survey, or sorry, the residents, how they feel about Dry Creek Ranch. Does it meet the overall goal for Dry Creek Ranch as a plan community, which is to provide a master plan farm-to-table community where residents honor their Idaho heritage through agriculture and recreational opportunities? Folks here, a majority agreed with that statement, and we felt that this was, was good to move forward with.
Can I pause you just for a second, Chair?
Sure.
Yeah.
So who developed the survey?
So the survey was, staff, we looked over the development plan for Dry Creek Ranch, and we went through the goals and came together with the questions to ask the residents. We also sent this survey to the development so that, or sorry, the developers so they were also aware of these questions.
Okay, so I guess my concern is, is it's not asking for any qualitative data, it's only asking for quantitative, yes, no, agree, don't agree. And so I'm not sure how the applicants, the, hello, back there, how you would end up knowing if the people that are disagreeing, you know, what they're expecting, you know? I would think that this feedback would, you'd want it to be more helpful for you to then take this and go back and figure out if there needed to be changes made. So that would be my only concern about this type of a survey, and in the future possibly adding a space for qualitative data.
Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, there are some questions towards the end that do provide an option for the residents to provide further comments, and they can type whatever they would like. So I, you know, you can go through each response, but almost everybody responded with some of that, that data that you're looking for.
Oh, perfect, okay, great.
Yeah.
I was just too, not very patient.
No worries.
I have a question. Your summary indicates you had forty-six survey respondents?
That, Chairman, that is correct. Forty-six folks responded. We sent this to all of the property owners within Dry Creek Ranch, and not everybody responded, but we did have forty-six respondents, that's correct.
And so how many did you send it to?
I have, if you look in your exhibits here, exhibit number five, that is our survey mailing list. Off the top of my head, it was, I mean, a good number. Let me see here. There we go. Exhibit number five, unfortunately I do not have a total number on this page, but there's three pages worth here. If I remember correctly, it was around a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty folks.
Well, that's fine, just go ahead, continue.
Okay. Question four here, it dives into goal number two, which was about population of Dry Creek Ranch. So goal number two for Dry Creek Ranch was that they recognize that the Ada County's population will continue to grow and positively influence that growth. And I will state that each goal, there's multiple policies and objectives. So we work to pull, you know, a question from the goal as a whole. So here, that we asked here about housing types, folks agreed or strongly agreed in majority that there are a variety of housing types offered, which in, you know, contrast can hopefully increase the population of Dry Creek Ranch moving forward and allow, you know, or meet a need that we have here in the valley to provide housing. Question number five, covered goal number four, which is economic development within Dry Creek Ranch. This was a response here, as you can see, that struggled a little more. We had forty-five point seven percent of folks is all that agreed with the statement that, you know, live, work, and play opportunities are provided to Dry Creek Ranch residents. I can have the applicant explain additionally, but basically as phases are, are developed and final plats are approved, hopefully this, this number will increase. We'd like to see that down the road, there are commercial opportunities for residents, but it just takes time as houses are built. Question six here was about the community, and actually question six and seven kind of dive into the land use of Dry Creek Ranch, which they're trying to ensure a variety and balance of land uses or support the Dry Creek Ranch community, and there is a diverse and strong community in place. Here, it's, over fifty percent of folks agreed or strongly agree that it is a diverse and strong community. And I'll move on to question seven, which also relates to the land use. And we asked here, you know, are there community amenities like trail connectivity, farm-to-table food concepts? Are those provided with Dry Creek Ranch? And here, the majority of folks did agree. It's sixty-three percent agrees or strongly agree versus the disagree side. Question eight here, we have some natural resource, this is, relates to the natural resources goal of Dry Creek Ranch. That goal is to enhance and utilize natural resources within the Dry Creek Valley. This question here, we wanna make sure that land, air, and water have been maintained by Dry Creek Ranch, they're not disturbing those natural resources. Survey results here show that folks agree with this. They are preserving those resources the best that they can. Question nine, we pulled this from the public services goal, goal number eight. And so public services, this is a goal where Dry Creek would like to construct, expand, and maintain Dry Creek Ranch's infrastructure to meet the existing and growing demands in a timely, orderly, and logical manner. To be said here, Dry Creek Ranch has provided a water treatment facility. Dry Creek Ranch has their own facility, which will be for the Dry Creek Valley. In addition to this, we wanted to see if the streetlights within the community provided a safety, and they were safe and mitigated light pollution. Ada County is a dark skies-at-night county. We wanna make sure that lights are not shining in the sky or in the houses, you know, windows as much as possible while providing safety for the community. Folks agreed with this, you know, in majority. Question ten here was, you know, has Dry Creek Ranch taken reasonable measures to mitigate traffic impacts generated by the development? This relates to goal number nine, which covers transportation. At Dry Creek Ranch is required to do biannual reviews with ACHD, to, or I'm sorry, with ITD, to look over traffic counts and have that continued dialogue with ITD to make sure that they're mitigating impacts on the, on the Highway fifty-five there. In addition, ACHD is also in constant communication with the developer. We did reach out to ITD and ACHD to see if they had any input on periodic evaluation. Neither provided much information. My pride and try to get something out of them, but they said that their traffic counts are sufficient and to move forward with this periodic evaluation. Their exhibits, at least ITD's response exhibit is in your staff report. Getting towards the end here, question eleven is a, this relates to goal number ten, which is the recreation goal. This is the goal that states to enhance the quality of life for residents of Dry Creek Ranch through parks, facilities, pathways, trailways, and community gardens. This is a question here that, as you can see, was kind of split. We didn't have a positive, you know, agreement to this question. This kind of aligns with, you know, the other question that struggled where just over time as Dry Creek gets final plats approved, more trailways and pathways and parks will be provided to those residents. Dry Creek Ranch has built a community center in pool area there on the, in the development. It is still in the process of being finalized, but that should hopefully provide some more recreation opportunities for the residents. In addition, there is a community trail that will run from the Ada Eagle Bike Park north through the development and into Avamore that is in the process of being developed, developed's not the right word, but developed in the near future. That will be with the next final plats moving forward. The last question here, before we get into the more qualitative questions, we asked the folks here to, you know, does Dry Creek Ranch, does the design of Dry Creek through street design and landscaping provide a sense of arrival? This aligns with Dry Creek Ranch's goal of community, community design to promote and encourage a community that is conducive to specific development standards and provides enhancement to the existing character. We felt that this was a positive response overall and that the folks of Dry Creek do feel a sense of place and arrival with Dry Creek Ranch. So that's all the questions I have that are more the quantitative, the qualitative. We, here's a kind of a word chart that shows you what folks loved about Dry Creek, what they liked about it, living there. Location, trail, farm, views. And then, you know, you have all the, in your staff report, you can look further at what they specifically said. And then if I scroll down here to the negatives, are there any improvements you would make to the plan community? Once again, trails, those parks, more open space. So I think that aligns well with those questions that we asked and folks' response. I'll have the applicant come up here shortly, and he can also, you know, go further into what they're doing to, to help, you know, those questions moving forward. Other than that, I did also receive some, let's see, responses from other agencies like the Sheriff's Office, Eagle Fire, and West Ada. Eagle Fire has brought up the traffic related to construction posing an issue. And there were some folks here that also had some issues with construction, traffic, and, you know, flowing through the development can be tough at times. Eagle Fire said that this is something that Dry Creek can work on moving, or Boise Hunter Homes can work on moving forward, and hopefully Todd can address that further. Another thing here is West Ada noted that they have been in communication with the developers. There has been a school site that has been established with this last final plat that will be an elementary school moving forward in the future. But, you know, once again, it just takes time for that to be established once there's more people moving in, more kids in the area. I was able to follow up with West Ada, and they said there's about thirty-one students is all right now in that, that Dry Creek neighborhood. So definitely need more students there before they can open.
How many students do they need?
That, they were unclear of. They said that over time, they're gonna have to do additional studies, but they're, maybe, maybe Todd has some additional information, but that's all I could get out of West Ada, they, they just were unsure at this time. So, did you guys have any questions, any further questions? I'm gonna make a recommendation that the director and the commission finds that Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community is being developed in accordance with the Dry Creek Ranch Development Plan as, and has demonstrated good faith compliance with the executed development agreement. So I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the commission?
Chair, Connor, could you just scroll, go ahead and keep scrolling so we can see the rest of the?
Oh, I'm, I, there is, there is one.
Just a few of them, yeah, just a few more, that'd be good.
There is one more question, I'm sorry, I didn't miss that. This was, how has living in Dry Creek Ranch met your expectations? So this was a mixed bag. The, the majority of folks, you know, they, they liked living there, they had positive responses. There were some folks that did have concerns. But overall, we felt that Dry Creek Ranch is in substantial conformance with the development plan.
Okay, are there any other questions for the commission? From the commission?
No, but I have to say, my, my favorite people are the ones who answer, "I don't know" to the question. Like, you bought a house, but you got no idea what's going on after that.
A little confused, but, right.
You haven't moved in yet.
Okay, thank you. I need to disclose that I know the applicant, I know Travis and Jim Hunter, and they're in the audience. I think the mask kinda... All right, yeah, there you go. So, and I have no conflict at all, but I do know the, know the people. So that's for the record. We, we have Todd. Are you going to make a presentation? We're gonna have Tucker make the presentation.
Sorry, I'm not Todd. I'm just gonna do a brief introduction real quick, and then we'll get to Todd, and he'll get into some details. But, yeah, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. Commissioner Davidson, Commissioner Beck, welcome, and congratulations on the election, and thank you for, yeah, your willingness to serve the community. And Commissioner Kenyon, good to see you again, and, yeah, we appreciate the history that we've had with you guys. We've had the fortunate history of a well-functioning relationship with Ada County. We've had the fortunate history of a well-functioning relationship with Ada County, including the staff, background of our company, and Dry Creek Ranch. So, my dad, Jim, he's back there, he founded Boise Hunter Homes in 2007, and we've been building and developing exclusively in, in the Treasure Valley since then. My father, my mom, myself, my brother, we were integral in the, in the company. We take great pride in our work as, our name is on the company and it's, it's the, it's our backyard. We like to leave a great legacy. Without hesitation, I could tell you that Dry Creek Ranch is the best project we've ever been a part of. The lifestyle of the community is unrivaled, so much so that I have multiple personal friends that have moved in there. My in-laws are building a house in there right now, and I'm building a house to enjoy Dry Creek Ranch as well. So, Dry Creek Ranch is, in my opinion, the most sought-after community, new home community in Ada County, and the community's demand speaks to its own success. As a planned community, Dry Creek Ranch is self-reliant and self-sustaining. We do not rely on nor burden any surrounding municipalities. We built and run our own wastewater treatment plant and our own water district, which we operate just to serve the community. We didn't want to be in the utility business, but we are by necessity. We're donating a fire station to the Eagle Fire Department. We're paying impact fees to, to construct the, the fire station. We're donating a seven-acre school site to the West Ada School District to build a new school, and we're anxious to get the fire department and the school in as soon as possible, and we need to gather some more community support to, to help pose the, the case to West Ada and to Eagle Fire why we want them right now. Selfishly, we want them, their, their amenities, and the residents like them. We've created, oh, we're constructing miles of new lanes on highway 55 for ITD. I'll, I'll also give you a little bit of background. So, there's a stoplight that's at Brookside Lane and highway 55 that we were not conditioned to put in, and as a matter of fact, ITD did not want us to put in, you know, their goal is to keep traffic flowing up 55 as best we can. We lobbied them and presented the case super hard to them why we would like a stoplight there, just for, for the quality of life for the residences. We'd, we'd heard actually one of our potential homeowners, or they, they weren't even siding up to buy a house yet, they got in an accident coming out of there, they got T-bone going, someone going, you know, 65 miles an hour on highway 55. We lobbied to get that in there and successfully got it in there. I don't know if residents realize that or not. We created a community farm, which is not just supposed to be the rec, a recreational community garden, but actually supposed to serve to allow people to eat fresh produce out of the community garden for, for three seasons of the year, and it's been functioning. We think very well, I actually get, that's where I ate my produce from there too as well. It's, it's phenomenal, and, yeah, you guys actually need to see it if you haven't. Acknowledging that the development displaces wildlife, we created a wildlife mitigation fund, which will create funds in perpetuity to, to mitigate the impact that we're having on wildlife. So we partner with Idaho Fish and Game, with the Mule Deer Foundation, with Ada County, et cetera, you know, to, to mitigate our impact and to, to play a role in conservation, and Todd will talk about our, a neat project we have coming up that we're doing with that. But anyway, I could go on and on with the characteristics that make Dry Creek Ranch very unique and contribute to its lifestyle, but I guess what, what I would ask is, as we are growing and we are a work in progress, that, that we appreciate the residents' patience as they're all anxious, we're all anxious to keep the ball moving forward and build out the total vision of the project. So, we could be more proud of the community we're creating, and we would actually like to invite all three of you guys to come take a tour whenever you get a chance, whether it's as a group or individually, just to see what we got going on. We're really proud of it, we'd love to share it with you. So, thank you for your time, I'll let Todd get into some details.
Travis, maybe some of the commission members might have questions for you, Travis?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It will, will, I'll see, do you have any questions for Travis?
Yeah, hi Travis, good to see you again.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just wanted to, to ask you, when you looked at the results of the survey and all the, the nice, thank you, qualitative data that was collected, what stood out for you?
Yeah.
Your synopsis of the survey.
I, I think it's, et cetera, and we actually, we're making significant progress on that. I'll tell you about a few of these amenities that I, residents will be able to enjoy very soon. We just built the, the clubhouse and the pool in phase, is actually in phase, our second development phase. We weren't even planning it originally, but Phase One, residents moved in and said, hey, where's the, where's the pool, where's the clubhouse? And we'd planned those in future phases, so we said, you know what, let's get right to it. So we went and built it. Unfortunately, we, we just completed it, it, it hasn't been open yet because of, we're trying to figure, sort through coronavirus protocol, and the residents of Dry Creek Ranch are super social, when they get together, they get together with packs of 50 and 100 at a time, so shortly, hopefully that will be open and used to the public. We're building a bridge right now that's, that crosses Dry Creek. It'll be complete in the next couple months, and that will actually be the connection to the southern half of our project where we're putting in ball fields and, and a park right there, and it's where, where one of our major community centers is going to be. And then, and it, with this next phase that we're recording here shortly, I think Todd could share it, but we're, it's, it's adding, I think, like three-quarters of a mile or about a mile of, of trails as well. But the trails, they, they go in, you know, we have, we have phases of development where we're not going to put a trail straight through, we're running excavators and bulldozers if, at, you know, 30 miles an hour, and so our goal is to, to comply with our conditions of approval and deliver trail and pathway access as fast as we reasonably can.
Thank you. You know, we just put 250 acres of property right between all three of those planned communities in conservation and perpetuity.
Yeah, I saw that, it looks great, yeah, we're.
Able to add to your network of trails.
Yeah, that's super exciting.
Yeah, I just have one more question for you, Travis. On the commercial piece of this, what are you hearing from residents that they want out there?
Specifically, I, I know that they want facilities out there, the grocery stores, restaurants, et cetera. I, I actually haven't taken a detailed survey of specifically what are you looking for? They want, they want amenities, they want places where they could go shopping, go get a bite to eat, and actually, there's a way you guys could really help us in that. So, we, we've taken out to the market, we've had it listed with a couple different brokers, we're trying to get commercial tenants in there, and access is a bit of a, is a bit of a challenge. Right where the commercial piece for a project is, there's, we have not been granted the ability to have a stoplight there, so, or a left-out, and so, we've been trying to get commercial facilities in there as fast as we can. It's an amenity to everyone, but we haven't had any takers yet, and as well, the community is green, you know, the, the commercial follows rooftops, and so, but we might ask y'all's help in the future of helping us work with ACHD and ITD to create better access there that would allow the commercial to be implemented and a, a, a better build out of the, of the full functionality and vision of the project.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Davidson, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Well, Travis, I do have a question. I see you're, you're paying, according to your chart here, $7,083 per home for, for development impact fees?
So we have, there's ACHD impact fees, and actually.
ACHD, yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't looking at the slide here. Which, which fees are, are you talking about the ACHD fees?
The ACHD, there's a, yeah, you, you put in your application here, there's $7,083 per home. I guess my only question, I don't need the detail from it, but do you feel those impact fees are being wisely used? And of course, you feel like, it seems to me like your development is paying for the cost of development, I mean, it's paying for itself.
Oh, yeah, that, that is true, and I'll say this, you know, a pet peeve of maybe some developers is when you go pay for impact fees to a agency or municipality or whatever, and that money doesn't end up coming straight back to your project, it's gone and spent in some other part of the county. We, we, you know, we, we want to make sure that funds that are coming from, you know, that are being ultimately paid for by the residents in the cost of the, of the housing come straight back to our project. So whether it's with Eagle Fire, or whether it's with ACHD, those are always, it's to be determined on how well those were, that money is spent, it's very early in kind of the pro, the process, but it's something that we like to monitor, and it, we, we feel selfishly about it, we want that money coming straight back to, to be used on our residents.
Well, I believe that the statutes require that it is, however, some don't follow it as quite as well as others, I think, I, I don't know, but I've, I've, I've heard that, but anyway, I think growth does pay for itself, and I think you're proving it, and I appreciate your, your presentation.
Well, yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Do we have any, whoa, is Todd going to talk to us?
Some, some more data for you guys, I'll give you the presentation. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Todd Tucker, work for Boise Hunter Homes. Our business address is 729 South Bridgeway Place in Eagle, Idaho. Like Travis said, we're very pleased to be here before you tonight presenting this periodic review before, before you, this is our first one that we've gone through, and so we're excited to talk about all the, all the wonderful things that are happening out at Dry Creek Ranch. Most of the background of the development is contained in Connor's staff report and was relayed to you by, by Travis, he did a wonderful job of that, but just wanted to let you know that the community is 1,414 acres of a farm-to-table master-planned community. The overall build-out of the development is proposed to be at 1,815 homes. It'll have 85,000 square feet of commercial development, seven-acre elementary school site, which was discussed, and also a one-and-a-half acre fire station on the property. Next slide. Currently, we have recorded five phases of the subdivision, which totaled 328 residential lots. We anticipate that by the end of 2021, we will have four more phases recorded. Those would be phases six and seven that are located north of the creek, as you can see in pink, the recorded phases are shown in green, and the Dry Creek Ranch Village, phases one and two, which are located south of the creek. This will bring the total residential lot count to 545 lots. Next slide. We're very pleased with the, the majority of the responses that we received from the survey that was sent out to current residents. We saw positive responses to a vast majority of the questions asked, and I wanted to take a second just to run through some of the reasons why we think so many people love living in Dry Creek Ranch. Next slide. The community farm, as Travis mentioned, produces a vast array of fruits and vegetables. This produce is delivered to each resident weekly during the spring, summer, and fall, and the excess is sold at the Eagle Farmer's Market. As you can see in the photos, there's a nu, there's numerous rows of crops and three greenhouses. Prior to establishing the community farm, we did a lot of research and interviewed many people with experience in this field with, with support, a community-supported agriculture. It was clear to us that the community farm runs, a community farm run solely by residents would not be successful, so we hired a full-time farmer to run the community farm year-round. The goal of the farm is to produce, provide fresh produce to all residents that want to participate, and we've met this goal the last couple of years, and we're continuing to make advances to make sure that we can keep up that production and demand. Next slide. All of the homes that have been constructed so far are detached single-family homes. However, we have eight guest builders within the community as, in addition to Boise Hunter Homes, which aids in the diversity of the housing stock. All homes must follow the architectural standards of the planned community, but each builder is able to distinguish themselves from each other, which lends itself to a variety of the home finishes. Next slide. This is a well-knit community of residents. There are community activities that happen either organically or that are organized about once a month. Examples of those activities are ice cream socials, cornhole tournaments, and food, food truck rallies. Shown on the screen are photos of three community activities that happened earlier, and that was, they had a Friendsgiving activity where they got together for Thanksgiving, and this was in 2019, and some carriage rides on New Year's Eve 2019, they, they had a horse-drawn carriage come out there and they did carriage rides around the community, and then there was a teen movie night where they got together in the backyard of one of the residence and all the, the teen, teens and youth got together to watch a movie. We're really proud of how much the residents interact with each other, and it's really unlike anything we've ever seen in any other community. Next slide. We have a well-thought-out, well-organized, and well-managed wildlife mitigation plan. The Conservation Advisory Committee meets regularly to discuss funding to organize projects. One of the projects that was selected earlier in 2020 was a restoration project with the Idaho Department of Fish and Game. We purchased 10,000 bitter brush plants that would be planted in the spring in an area near southeast Boise that was devastated by fire. Bitter brush is the main food source for wintering mule deer, and so this, that, that, that crop or that, that area was, was decimated, and so this was trying to re-establish some of those plants to help the, the wintering mule deer, deer in that area. We're also organizing the residents to help participate in the, in the planting efforts of those, of those plants as well, to get the, the youth and the, the residents out there to participate in planting those. We also are in discussions with Idaho Fish and Game about a, a game crossing over highway 21 to help fund part of that, and our, our wildlife mitigation plan really has three, three main goals, and that is to, to help regional projects with big game, to acquire land for the preservation of wintering habitat and, and migration corridors, and then also education of the residents. Next slide. The images on the screen are the farmhouse and the barn located within Dry Creek Ranch. We have a condition of approval that requires us to preserve the farmhouse, however, we are not required to save the barn. After hearing input from the community, we decided it was best if we preserved the barn also. So we worked extensively with their planning staff and as well as the Ada County Historic Preservation Commission to adopt the historic plan that preserves the barn as well. We feel that it was the right decision, and we're glad that we, we made that decision, and we feel it really adds to the community. Next slide. We provide our own water and sewer services to the residents in Dry Creek. We have a world-class sewer treatment facility located on-site. In addition, we have two prolific wells that produce an abundance of great water for the community. These facilities are fully operational and performing flawlessly, and the, as Travis mentioned, this project doesn't rely on outside utilities from any municipality. Next slide. There, there were however, a couple of items in the survey that we need to address, and I want to now run through how we as the developer either already have addressed those issues or are working to, to address those. Next slide. There are currently eight acres of open space within the platted phases of the subdivision, shown in green on the map. As you can see with the recording of phases six and seven, north of the creek, in Dry Creek Ranch Village Phases One and Two, all of those shown in pink on the map, there will be an additional 20 acres of open space and parks created this year. I would like to also point out that the seven-acre elementary school site, which is shown in yellow, is within Phase Five, which was just recorded in December, December of last year, and the 1.5-acre fire station site, which is shown in red, is located within the Village Phase One plat that we are currently, currently working on and will have recorded, we think, fairly shortly. Next slide. As Travis mentioned, we just completed construction on the first community center and swimming pool. This amenity was not on the original plan, but after resident feedback, with the completion of Phase One, we immediately added this. We're still working on our final approvals from the planning and building departments on this facility. Next slide. After occupancy is granted by the, the county, we plan on opening this facility up to the residents after appropriate safety measures and precautions with respect to the coronavirus are in place. Next slide. We've got a few pictures of the, from the interior of the facility. We feel that this facility is, is a great amenity to the community and will provide residents a place to recreate. Next slide. Here's just another picture of the inside. Next slide. We also heard from residents the desire for the commercial development to begin. We want this also. As Travis noted, one of the major drivers for us to get the Village plat approved in 2019 was that this is where. approved in 2019 was that this is where the commercial component of the development is located. We've been marketing the commercial aspect of the project and even met with several local businesses to try to generate interest. We will continue to pursue meeting with businesses and generating interest in the property, but as of right now, there's just not enough population in the area for commercial businesses to be interested. In addition, as Travis noted, ACHD and ITD want to restrict left turns out of the project on Dry Creek Road and will not allow a traffic at this location, and these factors severely limit the commercial viability of this property. And as Travis noted, we'd probably like to ask for your help on, to us, on getting some of this accomplished, working with ITD and ACHD. Next slide. We're currently working on the construction of the Spring Creek Road Bridge that crosses Dry Creek. Now, this will connect the established phases located north of Dry Creek with the new phases that will be constructed on the south. If you look on the right, there's some actual photos of the bridge being installed, one of the large girders being installed, and then also kind of the deck over the bridge. As previously noted, we are currently constructing Dry Creek Ranch Phase One, and after that, we'll begin on Phase Two, which contains the West Village Center. This is where the sports fields are located, as well as the large community center, swimming pool, and community farm. In addition, Phase Two of the project will begin our realignment and widening of Dry Creek Road. This will be a benefit not only to the residents of our community, but as well in Dry Creek Ranch, but as well as the citizens in the area, as Dry Creek Road does not currently meet ACHD standards. Next slide. There are currently 1.5 miles of trail and pathways within the subdivision. The existing trails and pathways that are shown in green on the map, with the recording of the next four phases this year, we will have an additional one mile of trail shown in pink on the map. This will bring the total to 2.5 miles of trails and pathways within the community. Next slide, please. ACHD required a narrow street section for the streets within Dry Creek Ranch. The streets are 29 feet wide from back of curb to back of curb with five-foot-wide detached sidewalks. The street congestion during construction is an issue, and we're continually working on this. We recognize the issue, and moving forward, we have successfully worked with ACHD to allow a wider street section, the 33-foot-wide street section, which allows parking on both sides of the road for the village plat. With, if you'll notice, the image on the left was taken in 2019 during the heart of the construction of phases one and two. You'll see the construction vehicles parked in the street, and it was crowded. However, the picture on the right was taken just a few weeks ago, after all of the construction traffic has left, and you'll see that there are almost no cars parked on the street. Next slide. In conclusion, we're really proud of this development. We are pleased that so many of our residents love living in Dry Creek Ranch, and we feel that we are in full compliance with our conditions of approval and the goals of the planned community. We're thankful that the planning staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission feel the same way and have stated that we have developed in accordance with the adopted development plan and have demonstrated good-faith compliance with the development agreement. We respectfully request that you make those same findings. I thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Todd. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to add the presentation as a late exhibit, the exhibit number 15, for the record.
Thank you. Exhibit will be added. Are there any questions to Todd from the Commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hello.
So can you tell me the estimated time that the fire station will be built? And then, as we know, it takes money to operate those, right? Because we're having one that sets empty at the planned community next year. So this board, prior board, is really interested in making sure that that was up and running, and wanted to know if the funds are going to come from, are you within another fire district and part of that impact fee? I don't believe you are, but if you could address that, that'd be great.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kenyon. Yes, so like I stated, the fire station, so when that plat's recorded, there'll be a platted lot there that we can then donate to the fire station. We do have impact fees that our citizens pay, and that money will go towards not only the construction, but I think the long-term staffing of that fire station. So we do have impact fees that we pay for the development. As far as a timing goes, we have, you know, we have discussed with the fire department, making sure that we got the size right of the lot that we're donating to them, and that they could fit the facility on that they wanted to use there. So they do have an idea of what facility, what it's going to look like, what the floor plan's going to be. They kind of have a standard that they're going with now. So we worked with them on making sure that it meet those size requirements and that it would function well for them. But as far as timing goes, we haven't heard a timeline from them. As Travis mentioned, we're kind of selfish. We would like it to be constructed as soon as possible. We think for not only the safety of the residents in Dry Creek, but the other residents in the area, and we think it's a nice amenity to the community to have that safety factor there. But to answer your question, we don't know a, you know, a certain timeline from the fire department on that. Most of it's driven by need from them.
They can check with staff, and they can track that down for us.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Are there other questions from the, do you have a question, Commissioner Davidson?
Farm-to-table, that's just the vegetables and fruit? Not slaughtering cows up there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, no. You know, in the past, cows have been ran on the property wintering there, but no, it's mainly the fruits and vegetables that are grown in the community farm there on-site. And we have a, you know, we, like I said, we have a full-time farmer. That's great, and everyone that, at least that I've heard that has interacted with him really loves him. He's very engaging in the community, and he makes deliveries to everyone's house that wants it. If they don't want to come pick him up, he delivers the produce weekly to their homes. And it's, I'm constantly amazed. We get a delivery at our office as well, and I'm amazed at the, just the variety and the amount of produce that comes, that he's able to produce on-site. It's really remarkable.
Does the farmer live on-site as well?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, the farmer does not live on-site, no.
And no samples for us?
No, we failed. Yeah, sorry.
Does he grow tasty tomatoes?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's a wide variety of stuff that gets grown there. Some of the stuff, I don't even know what it is, but it looks really good. But yeah, maybe if this, we'll have to coordinate this next, in two years, so that it doesn't happen in the winter, that it happens maybe in the fall, and we can bring you guys some stuff.
Or you can come out there.
Okay, okay. Are there any further questions of the, yeah, what could?
I just have one quick one, if you mind, and then I'll make a motion if we're ready.
Well, we have one more person that wants to.
Oh, we do? Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask Travis, did you ever find those red-ban trout?
No.
Dang, okay.
Try again, though.
All right, keep looking.
Okay, Stephanie Wolf.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I live on Dry Creek itself. My house backs up to Dry Creek, so I probably have a better point of view than some people do that live in the community. I get to watch a lot of the action out the back, the birds and the wildlife, and it is beautiful. The two things that I have that I object to are the trails are flooded almost all the time, standing water behind my house all summer long with mosquitoes. I've spoken to Boise Hunters several times, and so far, they haven't been able to get the drainage correct. I understand that now it's winter, and although, yes, we have lots of trails, they're almost constantly flooded. Even after a week of no rain or no snow, the trails are impassable. I was out there two days ago before this rainstorm hit, couldn't get through them at all, completely flooded through most of the trail system. So there's a huge drainage problem along the creek. My second issue is the treatment of the trees of Dry Creek. I sat there and watched as they were moving trees and taking down branches. They're using a bucket on a tractor and just knocking trees over and knocking down dead trees. They're out there with weed whackers, cutting down new saplings. So we're not getting any new growth of trees. We're not replanting the trees. They're taking down the trees that are dying. I understand that it's a wild conservation area, but it still needs to be maintained and maintained in a proper fashion to take care of the trees and to take care of the property that's out there, to supply the wildlife that lives there. I think that they need to get an arborist out there or somebody that's got a little more input on what's happening with the trees in the beautiful creek area. Dry Creek Ranch is a wonderful place. I love living on the creek. I love watching the wildlife out there, and it breaks my heart when I see the resources being squandered like that. Thank you.
Well, Stephanie, maybe some of the Commissioners may want to ask you a question. Is there any questions for the, from Commissioners to Stephanie?
I don't, but I would like one of the folks, whether it's Travis or Mr. Tucker, to respond. I think that would be a good thing in order.
That'd be fine.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask a question. Stephanie, Commissioner Davidson has a question for you.
The, so the trail behind your house, about how far away is it from your home?
From my back fence, it's probably 10 feet, maybe 15 feet.
And this is a gravel trail?
Yes, it is, like a diatomaceous earth trail.
Okay. And how extensive is the puddling?
The flooding is probably 20 feet during the summer, maybe 20 feet, 15 feet long, covers most of the trail at the intersection there at the park.
So is it kind of in the middle?
Yes.
Like it's sinking in?
Yes.
Any idea what caused that? Has it always been that way? Is there a certain usage of the trail that's affecting?
I've only been there since March, but it's been like since I've lived there. The other trail that's flooding is going through the Green Bell area, and that's completely flooded. It almost goes through a drainage basin, so I don't know how they're going to keep the water off the trail, but it's completely impassable.
So if they were just to pour more stone on there and maybe have a convex shape instead of a concave, would that fix the problem?
That probably would. I think at the issue behind my house, they tried to put some drainage that went underneath, but it wasn't nearly big enough to hold the amount of water that comes through from the park. Because it's on a downslope, the water just drains through the slope, and it completely floods that area. So I would think there's going to have to be some type of a culvert or something going underneath the trail. Not a massive one, but something to keep the water flow going from over the top of it.
And you said this causes mosquitoes in the?
Yeah, it's mosquitoes, and the trail's not usable back there, unless you're going to walk through the mud. And that's right by the park where all the kids play, so they're in there too, which is a mess.
Yeah. Are there horses or anything heavy going down there?
We don't have any horses in our neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Travis, would you like to respond to Stephanie?
Yes, Stephanie, I understand your concerns. I'll talk about the trees first. So we like to keep as many trees as we can in there. There's some safety concerns with, they're all caught, there's a lot, majority cottonwoods down there that they, windstorm comes, and they're incredible safety hazards. They fall on peoples. We've already had one that fell in right across the back of someone's fence. We, our goal is to keep as many of the trees as we can, but we have arborists look at the trees, and they say, that one's dead, that one's rotting from the inside out, you got to take that one out. So we just take out as many trees. We want to keep as many as we can, but we take out the ones that are safety hazards. So, and then regarding the trail and the drainage in it, so the first phase, we put the trail down in the creek bottom because we thought people would enjoy it better, walking underneath the canopies of the trees by the creek. But of course, there are high-water events and drainage where there can be moisture and flooding and puddles on the trail. So, and after the feedback from phase one, we pulled the trail out of the creek bottom for the remaining phases, and it's not right down, you're not under the, direct under the canopy of the trees, you're a little bit higher up. We won't have those flooding issues anymore, but it's not quite the cool setting of being down right in the middle of the creek bottom. So it's a, it's a balance, and hopefully there will be enough trail surfaces to where you can choose a variety of paths that, you know, fit the weather better.
Chair, I have a question for Travis. So can you address the trail that goes right behind her home, within 10 feet? That's not the one in the creek bed.
I believe you're talking the one in the creek behind your home. I'm not exactly sure where your house is. She, we are talking about that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank. Are there any other questions of the Commissioners?
No.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Can I respond to the response?
Sure.
I love the trees, and I understand that the dead ones need to come down. That is not my issue at all. My issue is how the sloppy way that it's being done, not that they're taking down trees that are dangerous, it is the manner in which it's being done. And then they're just being piled up and just laid out there. There's trash along the that builds into the slopes. It's just, it's just a mess back there a lot of the time. But it's not the issue that the trees need to come down. I completely understand they do. I just think that they should be replanted, and maybe the new saplings shouldn't be taken down with a weed whacker, so we can get more of a canopy going again. That's the natural cycle of trees. They're going to die, the new ones come up with seeds, and if you cut down the seedlings, then we're not going to have any trees back there at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, I will, unless there's further, any further testimony, further questions? I will close the public hearing for application 201601258DAM, Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community Periodic Evaluation. The public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the Commission?
Ready to go? All right. Well, I, first of all, I wanted to just say I really appreciate everything that you've done out there. I think that, you know, I'm not initially a fan of planned communities, but I've grown very fond of yours. You guys are doing a great job. I do have empathy for Stephanie and her testimonies. I have a place out in Eagle with family that we've had for four generations, and just witnessed this month a bulldozer going down with a bucket and knocking down trees in the same way, right? And that's how they get rid of the ones that are dangerous, that could, you know, fall and hurt someone. So I personally would like to see them treat those trees with a little bit more gentle kindness and care than the big bucket. So I totally appreciate where you're coming from with that. But I do think that they do meet the periodic evaluation and review, and they are in substantial compliance with their development plan, so I would make a motion if my fellow Commissioners are ready. Okay, then. I move to approve application number 201601258DAM, Dry Creek Ranch. This is the periodic evaluation and review, and based on the findings of fact or the testimony here tonight and the review by staff, that looks like the evaluation meets substantial conformance with the development plan and compliance, and so I would vote to approve the plan tonight.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
It was a rambling motion. It's late.
Yes. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll second the motion.
The move and seconded that the application 201601258DAM, Dry Creek Ranch Plan Community Periodic Evaluation, be approved. All of-
Discussion?
No further discussion for me.
Discussion?
I would just encourage Stephanie, was it, if you feel the mosquito situation hasn't been solved over the next several months, just contact us or send us a letter, and we can review that again. But that's all the discussion I have.
More discussion? With that, the question is, so motion passed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. The periodic review has been approved. Congratulations.
Go find those red-ban trout.
Right. With that, the board is in recess.
Return for the evening.
Return. We're adjourned for the evening. We're off the record.